I'd like to lead them to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any motion to approve the accept term? I'm sorry, would you agree on that? Any motion to approve the mention of firing me?
So.
Second.
Linda, yeah. Home favorite?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Jean?
Sorry.
Hey, you're a name.
Hi. What did you say?
Good to grab.
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
Jessica, Sabine?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Here, thank you.
Now, any motion to adopt this evening's agenda?
Some of them.
Jason?
Second.
Jessica?
Jean?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
I'm sorry, who's going to mic tonight? I'm going to carry it.
Okay, item three point three, approval of the business consent agenda items, any motion?
Some of them.
Mike and Linda?
Jean?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Here.
Item three point four, CPSC and CSE items, any motion?
Some of them.
Second.
Mike, Jason.
Jean?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Here.
Final item on the consent agenda, item two point five, any approval for the personal consent agenda?
Some of them.
Linda?
Second.
Jessica?
Jean?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
So, we carry it.
I don't have anything for the president to report other than saying our wife made her surgery pretty well. I'm tired of being a nurse. I turned over to Linda, I know she has a few items.
Yeah, this coming week, October twenty sixth and twenty eighth is our school board convention in Buffalo, New York, and I have an opportunity to have some wonderful webinars and workshops and work with school board members from across the state. I'm really looking forward to it. This will be my eighth year on the school board, and I've only missed one year, and then it's back in COVID when they didn't have the school board convention, it was all done virtual. And it's a great learning experience for me. I've gleaned a lot of information, brought it back to the school board and to the district, and I'm looking forward to it. The other thing is our new school board members have an opportunity on the nineteenth of October to have a, it's a special meeting for them at BOSI's, and they're going to be given a tour, and they're welcome to attend. They've also invited other school board members to attend as well on our school board, as well as board members plus the fifteen component districts where they're going to open up BOSI's and show them all the things that are going on there at the facility. And so I wanted to make sure the invitation was out there. And firmly, this past week, I had an opportunity to do a webinar on communication, which had to do communication from the school board to our community, to our staff, to our kids. It talked about some of the tools that we already use here in the district. It was a wonderful webinar, it was about an hour and a half long. And so what I wanted to share with my school board members here is that webinar that I was able to have Marcy help me save it so that if you want to listen to it at your leisure, I was able to get it so that they will send it to you electronically, and you can listen to it. And I went ahead and made copies of the information that I was able to glean from it. And I also shared it with Jean and Cory. And we're hoping during our retreat this fall that we can talk a little bit about some of the things that we can do from a marketing standpoint, what other things can, give that to Marcy, what other things can we do to be better at communicating to everyone in our community, do a better job of doing, you know, saying the things that we need to say that are important about our kids, about our programs, about our staff, what are we doing? And using all the wonderful tools we already have, but also taking advantage of the staff that are already really good at talking in front of people, but possibly maybe we need to bring somebody on board who can help us do that as well.
I think BOSI's offers a service.
Yes, they do.
That will audit the communication.
Yes, they do. So, anyway, it was a great, great, great thought, so I wanted to share that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Linda. Yeah, so. I'll just kind of quickly review the goals, I've shared this information previously with the board, and I know that our staff saw this opening day as well, so I'll just kind of go through these pieces. Back in two thousand twenty-one, we put a large stakeholder group together. And the focus was really trying to bring that group together and talk about areas that maybe we could improve as a district. And as you can see, we kind of, we tried to condense down the message. We have a mission, we have a vision, we have core values, and certainly you'll see goals as well. But trying to hone that into a message where everybody can understand and speak to it as opposed to some of the longer mission and vision statements that we read and forget quickly. So if you sum it up, a lot of it really comes to really each student and that their future ready, or goals. Make sure that each student, when they leave us, that they're future ready. These were some of the priority areas that came out of that, engaging and challenging learning for all, culture of collaboration, human capital, and wellness and student support. These are action plans, which I know, you know, some of them are ongoing, some of them, you know, we plan to have completed. Certainly continue to add to each of the different areas along the way. And again, these align with, these, these action plans align with those district priority areas. So based on those, this year, we continue to develop the structure and operational components of a true professional learning community. We continue to do a tremendous amount of work, our staff has done an incredible job with this work, and I'm seeing great things happening throughout the district. I was able to attend the guiding coalition meeting with AES and OES last week, it was awesome. Everybody involved did a, did a great job, and there was just, there was some great feedback and teamwork that was happening in that meeting. So really pleased to see that work. I know that the high school and middle school also have their guiding coalitions as well. So the components, I think that we're, you know, we're fairly strong, we're just, we're just working on the details behind the scenes to, you know, continue to get better with that work. Second bullet, develop educational models, procedures, force work, physical and operational structures that expose leaders to future career opportunities. So you're going to hear tonight from Mr. Westcott and some of our students who work in the Career Center. And they're going to talk about the work that they're doing, talking about the exposure for our students across the entire district. And we certainly feel that's a really important piece of the work we do here for kids. Third piece, increase communication and transparency to all stakeholders. I think this is, this is ongoing, this is something we can always get better at, it's never perfect. We certainly know we can, we can continue to do more work in that area. Second to last bullet, enhance primary program, looking at the growth of our student literacy and numeracy levels. There's a lot of conversation about particular reading programs out there, but putting some, some groups together and developing some goals around what that looks like, and really honing in. I think that, you know, and a lot of the research tells us that if we can, we can get kids early on and keep them on pace, the chances of them being successful down the road are much greater. So I'll be working with the elementary principals and the guiding coalitions as well, along with the rest of the staff on that. And that really creating a safe and right in learning environment for all students. We were able to add an additional SRO this year, which certainly grateful for to have the board support on that. They've been a great resource for the entire district and doing trainings with staff and bringing things that we might not think about every day. They kind of have a different scope and lens for when it comes to safety, so it's really just been outstanding to have them involved. Again, just quick, these are the three big components of a PLC, you know, so it's focused on learning, it's focused on collaboration, and a focus on our results. So what are we doing based on what are results are telling us? Again, real quick here, just, this is all associated to exposing our students to careers. I think we have a student who potentially may be going to work with an engineer, I believe, and do some shadowing. So I think that's going to take place. We have all sorts of different things that are, that are going on throughout the district and student opportunities that are available. So if you hear others that are interested, that they want to be a teacher, whether they want to be an architect, an engineer, a nurse, whatever it might be, we want to get them exposed to those career fields as soon as we can to strengthen that for them in the future. And then these have been our district goals. We updated those a little bit, we went from ninety to ninety-five percent because we were reaching that goal quite consistently prior to the pandemic, still in that range of that goal. Always, obviously, to keep our dropout rate, the goal, I mean, really, you want to get it to zero, but we went from five to three percent. If you look at our state ELA and test scores, if you average three through eight from two thousand sixteen on, we've roughly improved about sixteen percent across two thousand sixteen until now in both math and ELA. So again, kudos to our, our staff for an incredible job. That's, that's not necessarily an easy thing to do, so that's, that's been good improvement there. We're always trying to rank in the top of the Regents exams. We don't know where Regents exams might go. There's, there's a lot of conversation happening at the state level on changing graduation measures and different pathways for students. So I expect to see something a little bit different in the future. I don't think it'll be completely Regents exam driven. I think there might be a track or a pathway that a student could choose, but I also think that there's going to be other options as well. And again, literacy piece is really important, and our writing and our talking's work that our staff do is certainly important as well. So we're constantly trying to keep those, to get those numbers up. We'd love to be a hundred percent, but we also have sets and goals that we think that we can attain in the immediate future. And then participation in school community programs. So all summer long, I mean, we had thousands of student registrations for camps. This summer, we have programs after school, during athletics and music, and after school care opportunities. There's enrichment embedded in there, so we want to expose kids as much as we can and be connected with their school community. Our numbers are up over two hundred, I think, in each building for, for students that stay there after care. So, which is, which is great to have them engaged. I think that's.
You have no more pages?
No more pages, okay. Any questions?
On the, do you know what our percentage, I know we want to be at eighty-five percent or higher, but do you know what the percentage of students that are reading at grade level is right now?
I, I could give you that information, yeah. I can touch base with Stacy or with Tom. I know that they gave the first benchmark of NWU, so they have some of those results. That won't necessarily just give you a literacy score, but they'll be doing those assessments if they haven't done them already. We can definitely share that information.
And I'd be curious to know the proficiency rates, since you're already going to look it up, of the ELA and the math, like, we want to
Yeah.
increase by ten percent, but what is the proficiency rate now?
We are, geez, I have it, hold on one second, I'll get it for you. So this is, obviously, this is still the individual pieces embargoed Yeah. for the moment, but we are about fifty in ELA three through eight, which in two thousand sixteen we were thirty-four. And then in math, we've gone from about thirty-eight as the lowest to now fifty-six. So that's a composite three through eight score. You get some fluctuations here and there, more on the math side. Sometime in years, we've had students sit and take both the Regents exam and the state test, and then we've had years where they haven't. So the score's fluctuating typically in that eighth grade math area, so. But we don't have, we still don't have all of the details around that, they're very lengthy, sure. Anything else? All right, so we have a couple of reports tonight. I believe the first one we have will be Mrs. Farrell, at Agnes, and she's going to kind of give an overview and talk about some of the work that they do in counseling program and some of the goals that they have for the year. And then Mr. Westcott will follow away behind.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Farrell, I'm one of the guidance counselors in the guidance department. And I'm very excited to be here to talk to you about our program that we've been starting and been working on and we're in collaboration with our Career Center. So this year, we're looking at some upcoming events, a lot of them are happening in October. And also to talk about student well-being, our academic support that we have for students, and communication through our parents and stakeholders. So tomorrow, I'm taking, it's not sixty-one, I think we're at seventy students, to Tompkins Portland Community College. They have a college fair with over seventy colleges that will be represented. The students get to go around, we also give the statue hunt, so it's very educational. And we'll be talking to mission representatives about their programs and what they offer at the collegiate level. So students will have a chance to have that experience. They also offer it out at Moon County Arena, but we have found it's a safe environment as students at Tompkins Portland Community College and smaller and less schools, so our students get more one-on-one time with their college representatives, which is why we go there as opposed to the arena. We also have started with the PSAT, which is preliminary scholastic aptitude test. A lot of students to take the exam for practice without the colleges that result in you set to college. And they're going digital, so we are working through all the things of digital and using a blue book and using application and the iPads. And there's been lots of issues across the nation in regards to this. This is great that our students are participating in this and have a chance to sit down and take a look at this exam when the stakes are low right now and have a practice service. So we're working on that. And we have seventy, I want to say seventy-five students taking that exam. Last year, we had twenty-eight, so we have a lot more students participating in both of these events. And the guidance department, we're working on individual counseling. We have wellness groups that are offered typically in the winter months. There's six sessions, we rotate when students come out of class, and they never miss the same class. And we work to improve, you know, students' well-being. We did an anxiety group, we're looking at test strategies coming up for this winter as well, adding on to that. And then we have follow-up groups too. Students like the groups, and we get to meet with them again from last year to this year and see how they're doing and how they're progressing academically and social, emotional. We have crisis counseling that we're offering as well as outside agency referrals. So those are kind of some of the things that we're working on this year and expanding upon as we recover. Academic support, we have grade level presentation when we meet with the entire group of students and tell them about what their requirements are for graduation, what they need to move forward, as well as their electives that are being offered. Then we meet students individually, we've just finished up senior interviews, although I still think I'm chasing a couple of them down to meet with. And we go through academic data review as a department, as well as the grade level. And we do Tompkins Portland Community College information app for students who are working on their early associates or just looking to earn some college credit. Communication devices that we've been working on, you all move to rooms through the OAC SD app, so we're working on that. Through that, we have announcements going on, we have links to the family ID for them to sign up for field trips. We're trying to be consistent throughout the entire district about how students can get involved in things and get involved in the field trips. Scholarships will be going through this as well, and we use the district website for our scholarships. School tool allows for emails, but we need to do them in small batches, otherwise anything might go out. So we've learned our lesson with that and been working on that too. We have letters that go out to reference to families regarding some specific issues that we may have, and then the family ID for assigning up for things. We have a brand new space, and I couldn't be more proud of what the work the students did this summer. It's great, and we are now located in the high school, the high school counselors, which is really phenomenal because kids are missing less class, we're more visible for them, we're right off the cafeteria, it's great. And we're right near the Career Center, which allows for us to have a lot of collaboration with teachers and stuff, which is really tiny efficiency, which is fabulous. We have an open door policy in the guidance office, you don't need to have an appointment. If our door is open, you're all the welcome to come in, this is for both families and for students. And we're going to continue to work and looking forward in improving our communication, accessibility, increasing student opportunities, and looking at collaborating more with everybody. And to that, I will have Mr. Westcott come up, and he can talk about the Career Center and all the great things that he's operating for our students.
Thank you, Mrs. Farrell.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We get Marcy on the, what was the song we were quoting today? Yeah, we want to go to that one.
I remember.
I think, yeah, okay, sorry, I got to keep, keep going.
Sorry.
So, okay, I'll turn this part over to you.
Okay. We're also here to present about the career center that we have in our high school. People, our staff that we have, Mr. Westcott, he's our coordinator and career counselor, he kind of just runs the place. And then I'm Sophia Slovene, and we have Ava Brown here.
I'm Bryant, Cassie Dawn, and Bobby, who really cannot make it to night, but also part of our student workers at our firm. As we mentioned last year, we came and presented, our students are trained and available to assist with career exploration using an app we have that students are, have access to on Zillow, if there's matchmakers for future colleges or especially like careers. We do college scholarship searching using college boards search engine, Get Future. And then we mainly help with student diploma opportunities, including applications, and then what other students need to do after they've gone through the interview process and have been accepted by the board. And then Ava will explain.
Another big part of what we do at the Career Center is facilitate guest speakers and presentations. So like today, we had Kupa College come in and speak to a few students, get on one work about information about their college and how to move forward in the process of choosing their college and what might be right for you. And then we also do stuff that can help you choose what you might want to do in your career after high school. So we do our guest speaker series, which is where like we'll have a business management representative come in and talk to kids that are specifically interested in business, give them information, answer questions that can help them decide if that's the field they want to go into. And then public relations, we help like get the information out to our student body. So we'll have like posters up around the school signaling when our guest speakers or presentations are happening with an easy Q R code that you can just fill out and makes it easy for everybody to have access to all the events going on.
That's awesome. So, so. And we continue this, this year is that we give a digital version of the New York State Career Plan, and we do it in an effort to get data, and we meet with the whole high school in classroom settings to understand what they're interested in, what do they like, what are their hobbies? And this is, this is kind of the highlight of the data, it doesn't tell the whole story. Last year, we have these top four, so last year, health science, business, education, engineering. Business has overtaken, health science, engineering. Wow, I was, I was astounded by all the different levels of engineering that students were selecting and talking about, and education number four. I would say after looking over the data again yesterday with some football in the background, of course, on Sunday, I would say that the trades are making quite a presence. I saw a lot of welding, a lot of Cosmo, I saw tool and die maker. So it's interesting to watch trends that are behind this. The other thing that we have to also be cognizant of is that students that are saying, I don't know, I just want to go to college and make money. So those, those ambiguous answers that really, now we have a group that we can kind of go after and kind of help with that and help them understand that there's some exposure to that, that they could get some information there. I'll go through some of this quick because there's a lot of information. I just talked about meeting with OFA to discuss also the role of the Career Center and opportunities, so we've completed that with the whole high school. Mr. Schofield and I had met with Jero Reeves from Big Ten University, and this kind of fit really well to our career themes that we're trying to publicize all over the district. The career theme for September and October is all around organization. And so Jero Reeves came to talk to our ninth grade about how to remain focused and organized. And so Jero Reeves came to talk to our ninth grade about how to remain focused and organized coming into the high school. That was a great presentation, and he's going to be coming back to meet with some groups of students on how specifically to tackle that. We're creating another partnership with Tyoga Opportunities for some volunteer. We're working with Alessio at the business department to have some of his students work with Tyoga Opportunities with some assistance to the elderly with technology. Tyoga County Talent Supply, that is just an ongoing organization of people that are trying to share resources throughout the whole county. Alright, what does Waverly have that's working? What does, what does Newark Valley want to see happen? How can we share in some of these tools that we all have to help all of our students in our area? And that's the idea of the talent supply. Business outreach and recruitment, we're getting in guest speakers. We're also, I'm going to talk about an event in a minute that's, that's going to kind of outline why I'm talking to businesses all the time and trying to create those partnerships for our students. Our student worker program is alive and well. Last year, we had somewhere in the area of a hundred and sixty workers. We're going to be right up there in a, in a new position that's coming onboard right now. We're constantly hosting college visits, we've already met with ten colleges in. We got ten more to go for the fall plus, as Mrs. Farrell said, we've got the big event tomorrow. Hot right now, college essays. Our seniors are in, giving copies of college essays, read this, tell me what you think. Resumes, mock interviews. Story from last week was a young lady who did two mocks and got a job at Price Chopper. She was super nervous, I'm glad it worked out for her. If you saw the questions for Price Chopper, there's some really good questions, that was, that was hard. Interviews for our students with local businesses, we just had Local Utopia back again. They wanted to hire one person, we had four people interested, they hired all four. So that's, that, that happens a lot, where businesses will come in and they'll want one. And I even tell them, if we need to tell someone bad news, I will help you, I will, I will do that. And they're like, no, these are phenomenal, I'll use these two for seasonal, I'll use these two for Saturday and Sunday, and that's what Local Utopia said. Zillow has a component that extends to the elementary. I've been talking to Leah Hartman, our elementary counselor, and ideas if we want to move forward with that. Very student-friendly, very teacher-friendly as well. Schools have gotten the word of what we're doing and they want to learn more. So we had Spencer Van Natten in to learn more about our Career Center, our career services. Marathon just visited. We have Binghamton University, I've been leading on Binghamton University for materials, for ideas with design. Now they're coming out to check, see what we're doing at the high school level. And Tyoga Central will be in here soon. We had students attend the TC3 Manufacturing Event and the BT Bosse Construction Technology Day. Blown away with those two events, our students were awesome, they got, I think they got a lot out of it. I only say I think because I asked every single one of them and talked with them and I knew what they told me to my face. So, Ava, you probably want to talk about the guest speaker series, it's dark.
So a big part of what we do at the Career Center is the guest speaker series, I already touched on it a little bit. But basically, we'll have like various representatives from different fields that could go in after high school. It's usually on a specific day of the week, we'll do that every week. And it'll be the last three of the day and then goal period, students can come down and listen to a representative talk about that field and ask any questions they might have, probably do an interactive activity to learn more about the field.
Lockheed Martin's having a manufacturing event on my birthday, because I knew that's what I wanted for my birthday, I think. So I'll be taking ten students up there. One of my favorite parts about the Career Center right now is working with teachers and doing teaching. We do the interview unit, as someone here knows very much a lot about, as being a part of that, Mrs. Brett does. We are doing resume, resume development and shadow event prep with the eleventh grade. We have Mrs. Otto's class in every week to talk about some aspect of career readiness. And we just locked down the sixth grade agriculture class on Halloween. And Mrs. Davis said she is wearing the cow suit, so just so you know, Mr. Westcott, she is wearing that. Instant emit events that we're partnering with our guidance office at Sudie Broome and TC3. The shadow event, just to run this down, we've never, at least I've, I've been here since 2003, we haven't done an event like this. So on the fifteenth of November, we're going to have right around twenty businesses in our collaboration space. It's going to look like a job fair. What I've always thought about job fairs, is that job fairs are great for information and they're great for kids to be a part of. The opportunity is really opening up if you're eighteen or older. So how do we make a job fair environment where businesses can come in and expose our students to what they have as their businesses, but have it be something a little bit more, and have it to create a relationship? So we've, we've put it out there and we've gotten a great response that we're going to run eleventh and twelfth grade students. The idea is to interact with the businesses, get their information, they'll be prepped before, and to create a situation where after the event, I can help them set up shadow experiences at their business. So we have businesses like Lockheed Martin, BAE, Tyoga Downs, we've got to watch age restrictions with the place and where they can be and where they can't be. Guthrie is, is onboard, we have a pretty robust list. It's, it's smaller than a regular job fair because again, the requirement is that you have to be open for these students to have a relationship with you. And not everyone can do that, but this, the, the goal is the people that can do that, it's going to be a great experience for students. So we'll see how that goes, we're really excited about that.
What's in your downstairs area?
Actually, we're going to go upstairs in the collaboration space in the second floor, and then we're going to do the businesses right around the room, in the center. And it'll, as you walk in, the idea is going to look like a job fair. Students will be prepped of how to interact with businesses. And so I, I see it almost like a rubric, so a student who's just walking through and going, man, this is, uh, man, oh, I don't know about this. And hopefully, we'll have very few of those. At least they got to be in the presence of business and to see that there's something going on. The second level, okay, I'm going to go talk to someone or go to a table and pick up a pen or a squishy ball, great, that's okay, but that's not really what we're going through. Third level, hopefully that students have an interaction with the business. And then the fourth level, that student signs up to be able to go to that business. And I'll, I'll help arrange those things right after the event, which will be, which should be fun.
You have a list of businesses that are going to be involved with that?
I, I have the list, not with me, but yeah. So we, we have, our number's right around twenty, and that seems pretty healthy to me. Ava?
Lastly, we have our website, and so I do that with the help of Mr. McQuine and Mr. Westcott. So on there, we'll kind of just put like upcoming events and spotlight the things that have been going on with Career Center. We also have a separate page for our business spotlight. So every business that comes in for the guest speaker events, we will do an interview, a short interview at the end of the session with them, where they can answer questions, and we record it and put it on our YouTube and the website, so that any students that weren't able to attend the speaker series can go on and get the information for themselves. And then we also have Instagram and X now, but formerly known as Twitter. And we'll just update and post kind of a little blast about what's been going on in the Career Center. So as you can see here, some pictures and posts have been featured on our social media, just to keep everybody involved with the community and updated on what's going on at Career Center.
Oh, and there's the gang. And there's, there's Ava, or, uh, not Ava, geez. Shelby Burkler was a huge part of, of helping out when she was in between hovering situations in terms of long-term sobbing, she would come in. She's very beloved and well-liked here at Career Center, so. That's our crew, that's what we got cooking, there's more for the spring, I won't go into that because I'll probably run over my time, but are there any questions that can help us? And you're in again, right?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Brett's is coming back to be a.
Happy to help you, that was a great experience.
Yeah, it was fun to have you.
Thank you.
Hey, so our next presentation is from our ag department. Derek Hill came and talked to me last week, and I said, absolutely think that, you know, this relationship with local, with the soil and water, what he's about to present to you makes sense to share. We got another presentation drop out due to medical reasons, and Derek, oh, he was right on it, he filled it in no time, so. I'm going to turn it over to you, Derek.
Appreciate it, thank you. Thank you guys for having us tonight. I don't know if it's my Westcott plan or not, speaking of cows, that's what we're here to talk about. That's what we're here to talk with you a little bit about. So as you probably know, we're working on a large animal facility, hopefully next year. And large animals need a place to be outside in pasture. And we're fortunate enough to have some property over by the maintenance building that's sitting there, fell, not being used. So we want to take advantage of that and put some pastures up. So when I thought about that, I knew Soil and Water had some programming where they help farmers pay for fencing to keep them out of water and, you know, rotational grazing, that kind of stuff. So I reached out to Soil and Water here in the county and asked if they'd be willing to help support our, our program. And they graciously said that they would. And, but there's a little exchange that we're kind of doing here, which I'm going to let them talk a little bit more about. The two maps that we provided, the one that's on the screen is the flood zone. You can see closer to the creek there that it's, that's the big flood zone, it does go up farther than that, but that's an area that we're going to focus on. And then the other map shows where we would like to build fence and rotate our animals through. That's the green shaded areas, and then the orange shaded areas are the buffer zones, the riparian zones that I'm going to let these ladies explain to you a little bit more. But that's kind of the basis of where this all came about. Our students here tonight are going to talk a little bit about the educational benefits that this is going to bring up for us. So Danielle, maybe if you can go from there?
Sure. Yes, I'm Danielle Singer, I work for Tyoga County Soil and Water.
I'm Wendy Walsh, I'm the district manager for Soil and Water.
So she's my boss. So we work with farms in the county, I'm working on implementing best management practices, BMPs, so those are like, you know, managing for the highest environmental stewardship on their farm, things like that, trying to mitigate our impact to the environment and our waterways. So when Derek approached us about this, we were really excited because not only could we help you guys put best management practices on your farm and operate it at that high level of environmental stewardship, but you're also directly having the next generation of future farmers, future consumers on the land, seeing those best management practices in operation and having that mindset as they go out into the world after. So we're really excited about this project, and we think that it lines up really well with all the other work that we're doing in the county with other farms. So those best management practices, of course, are things like manure storages, so that farms can put the, collect all those nutrients and get them on the crop field at the time of year when we want them out. There are things like putting the cover crops out in the falls, those green fields you see after harvest, so that there's something living on the, on the soil all year. But also rotational grazing, as Derek mentioned, having good grass growth, healthy soils year-round. Those are really good practices to have on your farm. And then the riparian buffer zones are also really important for water quality. So riparian buffers are just trees and shrubs, native species that are planted along our streams. Streams are healthiest in our part of the, the US with tree canopy to cool the water, the roots hold, the banks the other, good stabilization. There's a lot of reasons why we want to have trees and shrubs along the streams. And so this project really checks all the basses where we've got the grazing happening, we've got our buffers between the edge of the pasture and the waterway to filter the water through. So we're, you know, doing all these practices and have funding for them because of water quality. So not only do we want to send clean water to our downstream neighbors, all of our water in Tyoga County ends up in the Chesapeake Bay, so we want to send healthy water downstream. But we also want to be recharging our aquifers, our drinking water with healthy, clean water. So that's why those things are important to our local community. And I'll add, when you talk about the buffer area that's to the south, a one point one-two acres, is a sort of special buffer, and there's a opportunity to be had there with the village.
So in addition to working with farms, Soil and Water Conservation District, we also work with a lot of municipalities, addressing stormwater, flooding issues, and whatever other stream corridor issues that they might have. So I happen to be involved in the Village of Ouego has a climate smart community program that they are following. It's a New York State program where they are basically assisting communities and being better with green energy, becoming more climate resilient. And so this program, the village has to walk through certain steps. And if they do certain activities, if they do certain assessments, they become, there's different standards or levels that they can reach, and by reaching different levels, they can then become eligible for more funding and opportunities to help improve their community for climate, climate issues. Flooding being a huge issue here in our county and in the village. So one of the things that when we started this process and being, being involved in the steering committee was, if they did a buffer assessment of the entire village, if there was an area where they plant riparian buffers, let's identify them, let's see what we can do to get them on the ground. It just so happened, you guys sit, part of your school sits in the Village of Ouego. You have a particular location, that one point one-two acres is a buffer that is buffering in Huntington Creek. You guys are in a flood zone, so there's a lot of benefits for us doing work within this corridor. And it would actually assist the Village of Ouego in meeting some of their climate smart community goals and reaching new levels so they can get additional funding in. So that's, at the same time, Derek was reaching out to us about possible grazing, I'm sitting on this committee and saying, oh, this, this could really work out. So are you guys willing to put some buffers in? And so that's how we connected, and that's why we're here tonight. I think it's a great opportunity, I'm not entirely sure if the students are prepared, so I won't try to steal their thunder. But with our programs, we assist landowners with monitoring and maintaining the buffers, so we want to really have a relationship with the students and make this be a long-term relationship that we can continue to work with the school and help educate and provide, you know, some of those shadowing experiences that you just talked about. The students could work with the Soil and Water Conservation District staff, learn about how we engineer, how we install fences, and all those things, but I might be jumping into the next speaker, so I'm going to stop.
I'm Mahila Walsh, I am currently our FFA chapter president, but I'm also a part of the animal science program that we have here at Ouego.
I'm Maria Slobom, I'm also in eleventh grade. I am not an officer in FFA, but I am an active member, and I am also involved in the animal science program.
So part of our project that we are proposing with Soil and Water is, is a community service project opportunity. So I don't know, many of you probably do know throughout, but graduation, NHS, FFA, P Club, they all require a lot of the same things, community service being one of them. That is a huge requirement in a lot of the branches we offer here at Ouego. So putting this land, this buffer in can also encourage kids to get involved and make their community service outline. So this not only would include planting the buffer, which would be about four hundred trees that we're proposing to put in, but also maintaining it. Well, part of this program, you have to maintain the buffer for four years. So that's mowing it, making sure if there's any flood damage, where there needs to be new trees replaced or tree tubes fixed or put back on, because they are plastic and they do fly off and stakes get moved. So that is a big part of making sure everything stays and looks nice around campus. So this really gives an opportunity to students to help either put in the buffer, but then you can also learn how to make a fence, like when you put it out there. So we're really trying to broaden the horizons of students, so we can show them the many opportunities that we have through Ouego, that we can help broaden the horizons through community service and outreach in the community, but also beautifying our campus.
The educational benefits that we will get from this pasture and having cattle at our school are, there's a lot of benefits. So not even just for the animal science class, but also for. So not even just for the animal science class, but also for the horticulture program that we have and environmental. So we'll learn about rotational grazing, pasture management, and we'll get to help of the fence, um...
The animals themselves.
The animals themselves. We don't have any large animals yet, just small animals and one reptile. Um, we'll also spend less money yearly on feed because during the warmer seasons, people have the grass that the cattle will feed on instead of buying so much more hay that we'll have to buy in the winter.
It will also, with the different rotational grazing and the different, uh, pasture opportunities, it'll give us a opportunity to have a variety of different animals, so we don't just have to stick with cows. There's an opportunity for goats, sheep, horses. Our horizons can be broadened by implementing this project and also can broaden our education as a whole.
And I've spoken to, uh, Mrs. Calgary, environmental club advisor, she's all on board with this, excited to, to help. Uh, because this is gonna bring wildlife and, um, you know, insects and, uh, all kinds of environmental impacts that, um, they'll be able to, uh, take part in, and so this is a really well-rounded project. I know I'm kind of in it for, for our animal science reasons, but, um, I know Mrs. Davis with, you know, horticulture and, and tree ID and, and all those things, uh, this will help, um, with some of those classes.
Alls I can say is, oh, wow, this is amazing, full circle everything. You guys are covering everything and it's waiting, wow. I, I just, the partnership that's going on here, it's blowing my mind. You guys, I'm, I'm so proud of you. It's a wow. What a great project. This is exciting. I can't, I just can't wait to see it all come to fruition.
Yeah.
And I've walked back there many times, gone fishing back there. I've done things with my grandkids back, but this is good, this is just exciting.
Yeah.
Exciting for our kids, for our community, and, and thank you for all you're doing for our, for our valley here and for the Chesapeake Bay, for the Susquehanna, because it makes a difference, the quality of the waters. I just ran into somebody down at the, at the river, uh, doing quality ass- uh, assessment, and he's, my grandkids were with me and he was getting all kinds of data, and I said, what are you doing? And he said, well, we're collecting, uh, DNA samples. And I said, you're collecting DNA samples? Oh, yeah, we can figure out what's going, what, what critters are in the water just by grabbing water samples and, and just, I never did those kind of things with my students. Things have gone, come on, so far since I was teaching, but wow, this is exciting to me, that. I'm so excited for you guys, it's awesome.
Thank you very much for having us tonight. We really appreciate it.
Well, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, just, uh, so funding, funding for, what do you, uh, how many animals are we looking at having barns, uh?
Yeah, so we've got...
What's it gonna look like?
That's a great question. Uh, so we have plans for a 30 by 60 barn right now. And, uh, I think we're hoping that's gonna start in the spring, right? I'm pretty sure the money's gonna be spent by then, or by the summer. Um, so hopefully that'll come in the spring, but, uh, we can start out probably with, uh, six beef cows and then get into sheep and goats like, um, Mahila said, and we'll, we've designed the barn so we can hold a couple of horses too, um, so a kid can ride. Um, I know one of our other administrators, he's excited about, uh, equine therapy, uh, kind of thing, so we're looking into those, uh, types of activities too. Um, the cost, um, Soil and Water's estimate is around 17,000, 18,000 in that area. They're gonna cover most of that cost. Um, I think the cost share, she's bringing it up now, the cost sharing, uh, is 12 and a half percent for us. They're covering 87 and a half percent. Uh, the 12 and a half percent for us, um, I, I like to have backup plans. So I've already put in enrichment, uh, program to build this fence, so as far as I know, it's already been, it's been approved, and we've got lots of fencing and stuff coming to enrichment too, so our piece of it will be covered by, by that, so there's no additional cost.
Any other additional grants that you could work towards?
Uh, I think the students, I would like to see the students apply for some, uh, SAE grants, uh, so that they can purchase the animals, and then when they're ready to take it to the fair, um, they'll be able to sell it and it'll be their, uh, project. So we'll, we'll kind of get things going here with the school, um, and the FFA chapter buying some animals, but, um, eventually I'd like to see students start to take some of that on to...
I was just gonna, no, go ahead, Jess.
I was just gonna add, I was just gonna add to the cost share portion. So our programs work that because we want the buffer for water quality, um, we pay for the buffer. We'll install it, we'll get the trees for you, and then, well, we won't install it, you guys install it, but we will get the trees, we'll get you the stock at the tree tubes, everything that goes with the buffer, we'll cover those costs 100%. Where we're breaking out the 87 and a half to the 12 and a half percent is just for the infrastructure, for the pastures, the watering systems, and what you need for fencing. So, um, and 12 and a half, uh, percent of that can also be, it can be an in-kind and cash match. So if the students actually install some of the fence, that's gonna cut your costs significantly, which we're hoping to, um, teach them to do that as well. So I think there's a lot of flexibility with that final number.
And our kids can do amazing things. We saw that, the guy who's departmental made in some of the other structures in our building, it's amazing what our kids can do, so.
I was kind of thinking a line, mine too, it's hard, sorry, talking about, uh, building barn, and that's, that's our, we're doing that. And, uh, that's your initial need for a facility is just the one barn?
Let's see, that's our initial, yes, that's our start, I think.
How many animals are you talking about?
Six, he said 16, we're only six sheep.
Pretty much. Um, so you've got to have room for them all in a single...
Right, we're designing it to be a multi-species facility.
Some, some of the animals don't belong to each other.
Right, yes.
And I think that's what, they know all that, so, but animal care, all that, if those questions pop up, again, you guys are, are the ones we've looked to, we've taken here.
And part of our program, especially with like the fencing, we are talking about bringing possibly Neetoes, so that the animals can stay outside. Because many more, I have, um, I come from an agricultural background, so we have over 100 beef cows at my house, and they don't, we just did put in a covered feed area, but that's not where they're gonna spend their entire winter. They don't spend, believe it or not, they don't really like the barns. We've had them in there and they're, they, they try to tear it apart, they're not huge fans of it. They prefer to be outside, which is confusing for me because I would want to be in the nice warm barn. At the school, we're going to try to make it most beneficial for the animals because that's our biggest priority. So it wouldn't be, they would have, they might have a spot or there might be other animals used for the barn, but the main pasture is going to be for the cows, there might be Neetoes and other things we put in.
And we're looking at, uh, other organizations. There's a safety, uh, organization, what is it called?
Getting dice cam.
Nice, yeah. Um, they've, um, we're gonna need gates and, um, scales and chutes and that kind of stuff, and because it's a safety issue, if that group is willing to purchase and pay for some of that stuff too, so we're, we're investigating.
That's your limited, what, the amount of acres you have out there, right?
Right, and that's what, another great thing that Danielle can help us with is they have a program that they can put in the soil types, so they've already tested our soil, and depending on how often we rotate and, um, graze, um, determines how many animals we can have on the property, along with the manure and things like that. So she's already kind of done that for us, so we, we know, um, we can, we can definitely do way more than the six beef cows that we're talking about. But that's just for us.
So you know where your upper limits are.
Right, yeah.
Just regarding the buffer, uh, is it development that occurs or are we just planting shrubs and trees?
Well, we, we make up a planting plan, so, you know, it'll, we'll have it all figured out ahead of time of like which species we're, we're putting in there. But, yeah, we're basically just planting, um, 15 by 15 foot spacing. You'll just see tree tubes out there, shrub tubes that are about this tall, um, and the plants that go in are usually about this big. Um, and it takes about three years, and then they're usually popping onto their tree tubes, uh, depending on the species, so.
Have they dumped the Hickorys or some of the other places?
Yep, Hickorys is one of our, yeah.
Yeah. Or along the, the highway that we've seen, yeah.
Yep.
But these buffers, I mean, we, we all know what the flood zone is capable of, so, you know, God forbid if we get something like 2011, what are we gonna do about these?
Yeah, if something like that were happening, uh, we should, you know, investigate having an alternative location. I think, um, C, uh, CCE of this county has a, a large animal facility. I'm sure that they would be willing to support this. That would be one, one idea, but...
It's important to have that planned, it's gotta be needed.
Right, the, for the barn is being built, well, technically that's not in the flood plain, so hopefully it never reaches that far, but, um, you know, if it does, we would have to reach out to some folks and try to...
We can connect you to the resources at the county too. There's a local, um, emergency planning committee that talks about just that thing. How do you move animal and livestock out of flood conditions or hazardous conditions, so they have a system for that in place.
Right.
Thank you.
So good.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Please thank you.
Thank you.
All in, thank you.
Moving on to, um, section eight, uh, we have the external audit 8.1. Any motion?
So long.
Uh-huh.
Second.
Test one.
Gee.
Aye.
Willow.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
I'm sure you're ready.
Next, 8.2, the GLE on MOU. Any motion?
So long.
Second. Jason.
Gee.
Aye.
Willow.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Moving on to discussion, I have the, uh, some piece, valid solar.
Yeah, is anybody, I mean, is anybody have a question?
Anybody have any questions regarding this pilot? I remember the solar pilots coming our way. As you know, they, yeah, you know, they, they're gonna put it through, they're gonna like it or not, and it's...
They actually approved it. That stuff is a moot point for them, for them to present.
So, yeah. Any discussion, right?
No, it's, oh. I, I just assume that they're gonna approve every pilot they're going for.
Then when it's fair, is that, that is the case, we've had, they ask for our endorsement, but if they, you know, if we don't endorse it, they generally press the right one. Okay. Then the motion, and then just discussion. Then we have the first read for the investment policy. Anybody have any questions or discussion on this?
Just real quick, we've been working with CBO, Kathy Black, on this, so the yellow would be recommendations, uh, of approval, and then anything in blue would be, um, cha- additional changes in language.
I read through that, and it's, it's very, uh, minimal, the changes, and some of it's just clarification from what I've seen, like, if I decide to...
Yeah.
It's all, it's all pretty much, you know, some of it's just minor.
It's not changed.
No, there's nothing major. So, okay, so we're, so we're going to CBO on it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Moving on to public comment, I have to say I have one, um, person that would like to speak in the board chair. Would you please come up to the microphone? Everybody finished that we are live streaming the meetings now, uh, there was a request from the community and so like, huh?
May I press please?
You may do that, yes.
So we just hear a whole bunch of positive stuff and I get beat up again, sorry, apologize already. Um, so the list of books that I'm pointing out to you, uh, most of this was compiled by other parents and grandparents living in the district. Um, the books, the list of books here are books that are, uh, currently, um, in other school districts. Uh, I highlighted the ones that parents have told me that they found in Ougio School District. If you turn to the back, um, I did include, uh, section out of one of the books. Um, some of this is real problematic, and I think it's really important for the board to know what, what we have in our schools. And I love this school district. I went to school here, my husband went to school here, my kids, my grandkids, and it hurts me to think that this is in the school district. We love our kids, but I think you guys love our kids. I, I want us to do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. But some future agenda items for our committees or, I think, like CSE report. Jill, Jill's gonna be on there. And capital private go review, um, on safety, those, UZOCs, yeah. UZOCs wants to do?
Yeah.
So they're gonna be looking at all the school districts that do it.
Yeah.
Okay, and it'll be 21st, 27th of November. Okay.
Is it about CSE report and do you get the next on the search?
Uh, I believe, yeah.
She's scheduled to do the national.
Yeah.
Okay, we do not have a need for executive session, so I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
So long.
Right?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.